To order the meeting of July 5th, 2016. Note, all commissioners are present. We have one open seat. First order, order business. Do we have any changes?
President Decker, I do have one alteration I'd like to request. It is on the 5:20 timetable agenda item, item number two. It's under TCB Rentals. And the zoning designation that they're requesting would actually go to community commercial as opposed to the general commercial that is listed on your agenda. So it doesn't change the item, just the designation.
Okay. And the paperwork's proper in the actual ordinance, right?
Yes, I believe that's exactly correct.
Okay. Anything else?
That would be it.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Consent agenda. Do the commissioners want to discuss anything on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? So that will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Okay. We're on to our first non-timetable agenda. And that will be the presentation by Ms. Rain. Am I correct?
Good evening, President Decker. Congratulations.
Welcome. Thank you.
And commissioners, I have before you this evening some nominations for our Historic Preservation Board. We have three different people that were nominated. Stephen Josephson, of course, everyone knows. And we also have Jared Too Good. He's the architect. And then we also have Annette Newbert. And she is the BLM archaeologist for the city. And this would cover three of our much-needed positions to get the Historic Preservation Committee back up and running. Staff would like to suggest that you approve these three people for the board.
Okay. Are there any other open positions or are these just the last three you need to fill?
There are open positions. These are the first three that we're filling. The commission hasn't actually had a meeting in several years. We were on probation with the state as a CLG. We have been restored back into good standing now. And we have submitted these first three names to them for approval, which is the state's policy, before we bring them to you for approval.
And they signed off, I take it?
Yes, they did. Stephen may be under a little duress, but...
Do the, anybody on the commission have any questions for Ms. Rain?
President Decker, if I may ask one.
Okay.
You, Ms. Rain, you might want to explain what a CLG is. I'm not sure our audience knows what that reference is made to.
Of course. A CLG is a certified local government. And what that is, is a designation by the state that allows us to review and hand out local landmark designations for historic properties. So we assist property owners, businesses, anyone that's really interested in doing historic research on buildings, nominating them for local landmark status, and then also helping them complete state or national landmark designation or registration. And that enables people to do work on historic houses that give them tax credits. It gives a little bit of protection to those buildings so that people can't come in and take out historic stained windows in churches, for instance, and put in non-period correct materials. And so what this board does is it helps work on some of those designations. It helps with the research. It helps with how to do research. It helps look at properties, for instance, for like the architect, what would be period corrects. For instance, let's say you have a house, and the house has had the windows replaced, and the owner wants to take the house back to a particular period in time. And the architect would assist us with designing some of those. Or if they think that there is built on a Native American site, the archaeologists would look at some of those features and look at past ways and decide whether or not we needed to have any kind of surveys done. And then, of course, the planner knows about different kinds of zoning issues and things that need to be done. We'd also like to have a couple of laypeople on that board that are just interested, community citizens, to have input. And then there's always room for an educator that would be able to come in and take some of the materials and do some presentations to the public in general of what we would do. That's partially some of the things that I do, but it would also be nice to have another voice.
Well, with your explanation, there looks like the three backgrounds of your candidates should fit in pretty good.
I'm very happy.
Yeah. But... Commissioner Decker, just because we want to be in abundance of caution, if you do, are favorable to these three candidates, if you could make Mr. Josephson's candidacy or appointment contingent upon a conflict of interest review by Ms. Kreip, I think that's in our best interest. I'm not suggesting that there may be one, but I think it's in our best interest to at least complete that process first.
Okay. I think we can do that.
Yeah. I think he'd be a good candidate, by the way. He'd be a very good candidate.
Yes. I guess then what we're looking for is a motion to approve these board members.
Make that motion contingent on the background that you had conflict of interest.
It's not a second.
You have a second? Any further discussion? That will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And we have some reports coming in from, Mr. Kessel will start.
Thank you, President Decker. I just have three items for you this evening. A couple of them aren't listed here, but the first one is staffing updates. I'm excited to announce the hiring of Linda Carlson to be the Deputy City Administrator for Finance and Administrative Services. Long title. And she comes to us from Casper, Wyoming, where she's been employed with the city of Casper for over a dozen years in their finance office. She's started out as accounts payable and has worked her way all the way up to Finance Director over the term of her employment with the city of Casper. So just tremendous experience. She's also very familiar with Dickinson. She actually opened the Great Plains Bank when that bank was opened here in Dickinson. So she has a strong banking background as well and familiarity with the city of Dickinson. So we're excited. She is slated to begin August 1st. So right in the middle of our budget process. So she'll baptism by fire, I guess. But hopefully she'll bring some really good ideas with regard to budget process and other The other thing that I wanted to mention is you guys approved a contract with the McAfee Kellogg firm to work in the middle of an investigation that was occurring with our city attorney. There were options to extend that contract, and it is going to be my proposal that we take advantage of those options. We are in the review of a need for a city attorney. And I think it's incumbent upon myself and you to be responsible to the taxpayers. So what I'm going to try to do is at the next city commission meeting is bring a report to you suggesting that either we hire with in-house counsel again or that we continue on a contractual basis moving forward. We're in a different environment today than we were four years ago. That's about the time we went in-house. I think it made complete sense to go in-house. I'm still an advocate of being in-house, but we may be able to get similar services for a little less dollars. And if that's the case, then I will make that recommendation to you as a city commission. So just wanted to make sure you were updated on that front as well. And then the other two items that are remaining, the first is the open commission seat, and you'll see on the slides that's before you, you have several options available to you as a commission. The 14-day requirement for the public to demand a, an election has passed, and so you have several options. The first is to simply leave that seat open until the term is expired, and that would be a little over two years from now. Or you can leave the seat open until November and use the general election to conduct a special election to complete the term, or the remaining term from November moving forward. The other option would be to appoint someone to fill the whole term from an appointment period probably at the next commission meeting or some future commission meeting until that term ends in a little over two years. Or appoint someone until the general election and then hold a special election to have that person complete the term, or simply hold a special election today or sometime in the very near future. I believe those are the, encompass all of your options. It would be my recommendation that you appoint someone until the general election, and then you use the general election as a way to fill the seat for the remainder of the term. That's been our history in Dickinson as we've done some research, and so that's how I arrive at that recommendation to you today. But it's your choice.
Commissioners?
I, I guess my concern is if we do appoint someone until the general election, would it be under the stipulation that they don't run in November?
That certainly is up to the commission. That has been a stipulation in the past, but that is not, there's nothing etched in ordinance or resolution that requires that.
I was just going to say, we, I mean, if we appoint somebody and they change their mind, we can't really...
Right.
Do anything about it, so...
No, so that's up to you.
But we can go about the same process where we can take some input from the public or nominations from the public, kind of what we did with Mr. Frenzel, and then present them at a future meeting here.
Absolutely.
And then do option four, where we have the, we appoint and then special election. My personal preference would be that, to appoint somebody, because with the budget process coming up, I think we need all five commissioners.
And I'm definitely in favor of keeping the public involved with the appointment.
Right.
Mr. President, I believe that's the correct way, is find someone out there that we can feel comfortable with appointing, and then with the promise that they are not going to run. Of course, we can't tell them no come November. But I would, I would recommend in contact with Mr. Joe Frenzel again, Ms. Shirley Ducart, Ms. Rhonda Ducart, they've all been three commissioners. I can't think of anybody else.
I have been in contact, Commissioner Steiner, with former commissioners Jackson and Johnson, and both have declined.
Okay. I figured they would. I don't know of any other ones. I'm trying to think back here, but out of those three, I'd be comfortable with any one of the three, if they would be happy to serve. I mean, they've been through the budget a few times with us, so I think that's important.
And who knows, maybe somebody else might would work.
And I wouldn't mind that if, over the next days between this time and our next meeting, if we open it up to public to apply or show interest in filling that vacancy so that we have not only the names that Carson brought up, but maybe some additional names so that we can really have a wide selection.
What I'd suggest then is that we run an ad in the paper, try to get the public discussing this item. And if anybody has interest, we'll put an end date and time on it that it, to express their interest to my office. And then I can bring those names or any names that have contacted you.
I think we should be ready to make an appointment at the next meeting.
That's what I would say, too. That, it's two weeks, so that gives, can give 10 days to get an application in.
We get somebody on board before we start the budget.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, maybe in lieu of a nice ad, we'll have a great report in tomorrow's paper.
Not both.
You're a reporter, not a salesman, right? The other item that's formally on the agenda tonight is a thank you note from the city of Dodge. We did provide them with some dollars from our sales tax revenue, and they were just expressing their thanks for those funding. And then I do have two more items, just quickly. We were informed by the airline service, United, that they are intending to cease operations in September. Before we get too excited, I want you all to know that we've been in contact with the governor's office, with United Airlines, and we are working with them to ensure continued service in a seamless fashion so that there is really no or little change in the service that they're offering today. The difference would be they would receive or participate in the EAS program or Essential Air Service Program. The city of Dickinson has had previous providers participate in this program. So we're hopeful that this grant process won't take too long. That's why I was in contact with the governor's office late last week. In speaking with them, all of our federal delegation is aware, and they've assured me that their thoughts are that there will be uninterrupted service to Dickinson and that United will continue to service our community. So I'll certainly keep you updated. I plan to call the governor's office tomorrow to receive an update per our plan of last week. So if there's any changes, I'll certainly let you know, and if it requires your input, I will ask you guys to provide that, so...
Thank you very much. I think it's important that the public knows that we're trying our utmost to keep this airline at our airport. So it is very important to southwest North Dakota. Anything else, Mr. Kessel?
I just have one final thing, as a, maybe as an indication of oil field activity. We have periodically entered into contracts to provide treated wastewater to firms that have then used those treated wastewater for their fracking purposes. We are in negotiations again for such a contract. I hope to have that contract on the agenda at our next city commission meeting. So that's usually a good sign, and it explicitly is great news for us because it's another indication that our planning ahead in trying to make that product available to them is worthwhile. And it's, this is not our first contract, so that plan has been executed, I think, quite well. So that would conclude my reports.
That first contract, that was with Rockpile, right?
That's correct. Yep. They were the end user.
We initiated that one.
What's that?
Rockwater.
Rockwater.
Rockwater, okay.
Excuse me, rockwater.
And we initiated that one.
I believe it started in January, February, in that timeframe. It was the middle of winter when we, when they did that.
That was only up to a certain amount of gallons, I remember.
That was up to 20 million gallons. This one could be up to 50 million gallons.
Nice.
Is that it, Mr. Kessel?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. And next we're going to public safety, fire department. Chief, Ivan. I almost called you Chief Civic like the news did last night, but...
Close enough. Thank you, President Decker, commissioners. July marks the 125th birthday of the Dickinson Fire Department. We're very proud of that. For those of you that were around through the Rough Rider Days celebration and saw the parade, I can, with quite a bit of bias, state that we had the best float in the entire parade, a birthday cake representing our 125 years of service. Our staff, my office staff, put together a little video clip that's airing on Channel 5 that we're very proud of. And I wanted you to see it, and if you haven't seen it already, playing on TV, I wanted you to see it. And as you play through the slides, or as we go through the slides, it spells out our value statement of service. And that's it? Very proud of the commercial. We're very proud of our history, our heritage, our culture, and we're continuing very proudly to serve the city of Dickinson. Thank you.
Chief, one quick question for you. Are we, I know it's important to you, the outreach with the volunteers. Are we doing anything advertising to the, to get more volunteers?
Our recruitment and retention program for volunteers is ongoing. Yes, we've used media, we've used commercials. Still, the strongest and best method for us to recruit volunteers, volunteers that actually will stay with us, is word of mouth, quite honestly. And so we've got a challenge out to all of our members right now. We could, we could use a few more volunteers. It isn't for everybody. We're a hard group to belong to. It's not for everybody. We're looking for the best people Dickinson has to offer. That's why Mr. Kessel hasn't applied. I knew, he knew that was coming, I could tell.
His fear of heights.
But yes, our, we use many different avenues to reach out to the public, and we're constantly looking for recruitment.
I, I know the police department had a video out there, their recruiting video, and this will be helpful also.
We think so. We sure hope so. Yep. Thank you.
You don't have anything with the police, so we're on to engineering. Mr. Kubis?
Thank you, President Decker, commissioners. Before you, we have your consideration to approve a change order for Ninth Street East project. Project started out as a street project. It really is our 2016 Mill and Overlay project. For some background, this was a project we looked at last year for our Mill and Overlay project. The condition of the road was, was in such shape where a Mill and Overlay really couldn't fit the bill, so it became a reconstruction project. Right as we were bidding the project about the week of the bid, we had gotten our drainage master plan in finally enough format to know that we had some storm sewer issues in Ninth Street. Unfortunately, it was too late to add any storm sewer to the project, so this change order is really our first implementation of a small portion of the drainage master plan that was completed a couple of months ago. And it would upsize 338 feet of existing storm sewer from 18 inches to 24 inches. And this change order is, is at our direction. We figure, you know, this is a problem that we now know about, and so we need to fix the problems that we know about. And we'll have the whole street tore up, so the cost of replacing that street really has already sunk into the project that we bid. This is just for the storm sewer pipe. The change order amount would be $69,240. It's been reviewed by Apex. We feel it's a fair price that we've gotten from the contractor, and staff would recommend approval. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Comments, questions from the commission? None? Need a motion to approve the change order?
Mr. President, I move we approve change order.
We have a motion?
Second. Oh, excuse me. He motioned.
Yes, he, we have the motion.
Okay, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Public works. Next up? Am I correct?
Yep.
State approvals.
Thank you, President Decker. First of all, I have two truck bids for your approval, for consideration to approve. First, I have a front-load refuse truck bid. The bids were opened on June 15th, 2016. We had two bids that were received. And also, this does include the trade-in of a 2009 Peterbilt pile. So the low bid was from Peterbilt New Way for $193,590. And that's from Northland Truck Sales in Fargo, North Dakota. The capital purchase budgeted was $250,000, and staff recommends approval. It's a standard replacement for a front-load garbage truck.
Now is that, that price, is that with our trade-in?
That is correct.
So the trade-in value isn't figured into the total spending from the budget I take?
The capital purchase, we included, you know, we had planned to have trade-in also with, with that. So we're happy with the prices. We're much lower than expected.
What I, what I'm kind of alluding to is we budgeted, what, $250? Well, what was the value of our trade-in?
I'd have to go back to...
So, I mean, does that go above what we budgeted? Once you... You know what I'm saying? What I, what I want to ask is, is that the total price with the trade-in, or are we paying $193 plus the trade-in?
We're paying $193 plus the trade-in, but it was budgeted for it.
He wants to make sure the total doesn't go above $250, but the $250 is new money that we budgeted, so...
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
So in other words, the budget was $250 plus the trade. This is $193 plus the trade.
Plus trade, correct.
Just to clarify, okay.
Correct.
Any other questions from the commission? Need a motion to approve the bid? So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we have another one.
Thank you, President Decker and commission. The next is a hook hoist roll-off truck bid. This is an older roll-off truck in the collection side for solid waste. Bids on this were opened June 15th, 2016. There were a total of five bids that were received. The lowest bid was a Freightliner Ampla Roll for $174,844. Now, this includes the Freightliner truck and Ampla Roll hook. You see those hooks that pick up the big cans? And this came in at $174,844. And we'd, the capital purchase item on, what was budgeted was $175,000. So we were right there with the, and we don't share that, so we were right there with what was budgeted.
Do we let these companies know what our budgeted amount is?
No.
They don't, they're just that good, huh?
Well, and we're in contact before we budget, too, knowing pretty much what the trucks were running at the time. Either they're that good or were that. I would, I would prefer the second, Commissioner Steiner.
Commissioner Steiner, we do publish our budget on our website. So they would have access if they chose to go that far.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions for Mrs. Zeroff? None. Need a motion to approve the bid?
So move.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. We'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. And the next and final item I have is a change order for the West Gravity Sewer Phase II project. This is a change order decrease, change order number one of $70,530.80. The original contract price was $1,829,425.90. And the contract price incorporating this change order will be $1,758,895.10. There's two parts to this reduction or decrease in the change order. The first is the liquidated damages. Contract was substantially, substantial completion, excuse me, was November 25th, 2015. Work was completed and tested January 18th, 2016. We did work with them quite a bit on negotiating the days and came up with the liquidated damages assessed at $60,000 through the substantial completion for this project. The other portion of that change order is the reduction in concrete work. Some of this had to do with Fifteenth Street, the access there that originally they were going to replace, but we knew the Phase III project was going to come into play soon, so we told them not to do that part of the work. So the reduction in concrete and other items was a reduction of $10,530.80. So that's the total decreased in change order of $70,530.80. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Does the commission have any questions for Mrs. Zeroff? Not one, need a motion to approve the change order?
So move.
A motion?
Second.
Second. All right, we'll vote. Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Making money for the city, are they? All right. Let's see, we're right at 5 o'clock. Strung that out long enough. Okay, 5 o'clock. We have a public hearing. Mr. Kubis?
Yes. President Decker, commissioners, the public hearing is for the vacation of utility easement in a replatted area of Westridge First. This originally was Lot 1, Block 1. If, if some of you recall, this was the Hoff Farmstead that was, was platted, but was kind of left out of the planning process for the first Westridge subdivision. It's a 20-acre lot, which subsequently was subdivided into single-family homes. When Westridge Two was platted, this particular property that had a utility easement on it just became the middle of a block. That block was extended further to the west. But during that plating process, this easement wasn't vacated. So now there, there's a home being built here with a large, rather large, 20-foot utility easement that, as you see in your packets, all the utility companies have signed... easement that, as you see in your packets, all the utility companies have signed off on vacating this easement. There were no facilities installed in the easement, and staff would recommend approval of this vacation. With that, I can open it up for any questions that the commission might have.
Any question from the commission, from Mr. Kubis? None? Well, the public hearing, am I correct, right? So, if anyone wants to come forward and state your name and discuss or question anything with Mr. Kubis on this easement, please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or questions from the commission? None? And I'll need a motion in regards to resolution, and what was the number on the resolution? Or this, yeah, this is a resolution, right?
Mr. Chair, the next resolution number is 22-2016.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Motion?
Second.
We have a second on resolution 22-2016. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. We're on to... Guess we have a few minutes here. A little too fast on that one, I guess.
Well, since it's Independence Day or the day after, you could sing the National Anthem if you want.
We'll look at it over here.
The petitioners for the 505 are in the audience.
Are they ready, the 505? Would you be ready now? Start. Okay. The second is a public hearing for the host approval for CHI St. Alexis Medical Center, and Ms. Kreip is going to report on that.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, CHI St. Alexis Dickinson is the intended recipient of grant funds through the Colorado Health Facilities Authority. They're private bonds, and in order for those private bonds to be qualified and get some preferential tax treatment, the local governing authority in the area where the funds are to be directed must approve that the funds will be directed to their area. And I believe we have a director of the hospital here that would like to add any comments if I missed anything, but there's a summary of the IRS code, and I could give you the predecessor code from 2008 and why we, and all this, but essentially, what the IRS code says is from 26 United States Code, Section 147-F, and for those private activity bonds to be considered a qualified bond, has to be issued as part of an issue which has been approved by the governmental unit or given on behalf of which the bond was issued. And so, we're not issuing the bonds, but we are the recipient community. There is no effect on our credit. We're not guaranteeing it. We're not named in the bond in any way. It's essentially just allowing the funds to come into the community for some refinancing on the hospital.
Do the commissioners have any questions? Representatives from the hospital, if you come forward?
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. My name is Reed Raymond. I'm the president of CHI St. Alexis Health here in Dickinson. I think Attorney Kreip has all the information on it. The only thing I'd have a correction in the memo that was sent to you at the bottom is that the address is 2500 Fairway Street. It's the only correction I have for you. I would really have to defer all questions to Attorney Kreip, so...
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Raymond?
Mr. Raymond, you seem pretty confident. Are you willing to sit in this chair for two months?
Uh, no, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, I guess this, we'll have to open this up for a public hearing, so if anybody would like to come forward, state your name, and let us hear your comments. Nobody from the public? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion, further discussion?
I would make a motion to approve resolution.
And this is resolution number...
2-2016, Mr. Chair.
So, we have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a second? We'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. This resolution passes. Motion passes. Okay, our 510 is for rezoning. Is people present?
The petitioners are in the audience.
Okay, the petitioners are in the audience, okay. We'll move ahead if it's okay with them. Okay? We have a public hearing for rezoning for TCB Rentals LLC, Community Commercial, General Commercial. Mr. Josephson?
Thank you, President Decker. President Decker, members of the City Commission, Steve Josephson, City County Planner, you have three rezoning requests before you tonight. All of them were heard at the June 15, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The first one is TCB Rentals LLC. It's a request to rezone from Community Commercial, Community Commercial and General Commercial to General Commercial. The site is generally located in a portion of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Come and Go subdivision, located in the west one-half of the southwest quarter of Section 2, Township 139, Range 96 West, and is approximately 0.98 acres, little under an acre. The Planning and Zoning Commission and City Commission recommend approval. This will be the first reading of the proposed rezoning, and I believe it's ordinance 1616. So, if you all were to look at the slide in front of you and you see the dark shaded, it's a shaded portion, square-like portion on the, to the southwest, right where the intersection of 10th and, and the interchange, I-94 interchange are that, that is the subject property.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Josephson? If not, we'll open this public hearing, so we'll open it up to the public. If you want to come forward and state your name at the podium with any comments or questions about the rezoning of the property, please come forward. Seeing no one's here, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further discussion?
President Decker, the only thing I wanted to add is that's the site. That was previously the Come and Go Convenience Store. I forget the name of it. I think it's called Lucky's Now. It's Tesoro, and they plan to do some improvements to expand the site, and that's why they're in front of you today for the first reading.
Okay. Does TCB, do you need to bring anything?
Good afternoon. Scott Heckman, Founder Engineering. Yeah, like Steve had mentioned, this is our first reading on this. They, TCB Rentals owns that whole entire L-shaped property, the Come and Go Convenience Store, which is now Lucky's Express, is the portion down in the southwest corner. Currently, as it's zoned right now, it's zoned two different zones. They want to make it one, tie it in with the lot size that we are reconfiguring it to one lot for that convenience store. They are planning on putting in addition onto the current building in the future. They haven't got any plans that, plans drawn up for that yet. Their current improvements right now is to upgrade their pumps, and they're in the process of replacing their pumps and putting in, in the new tanks for their gas station at this point. But we wanted to clean up that lot and zone it, so it was all one zone, not two zones.
Commissioners have any questions? Thank you. I guess we'll vote on this then. And I need a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, and we have a second. This is 1617, ordinance 1617?
Ordinance is 1616.
Okay, 1616. The next one will be 1617. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Mr. Josephson?
Thank you. Thank you, President Decker. The next rezoning request in front of you is to consider a rezoning petition from low-density residential and community commercial to community commercial. The site is generally located in portions of Lot 1 and 2, Block 1 of the Come and Go subdivision, located in the west half of the southwest quarter of Section 2, Township 139, Range 96 West. The site is approximately 3.43 acres. This is both the Planning and Zoning Commission and City, and City staff recommend approval. This will be the first reading of the proposed rezoning. And this is actually, if you, if you look at that, the graphic in front of you, and it's a light, it's, as Mr. Heckman said, it's an L-shaped property. This is the lightly shaded area to the, on the east side of the property. There is commercial zoning to both on the, that runs along the west side of it, and commercial zoning to the, to the east of it. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have. This would be ordinance 1617.
So, you have East End Auto to the west, and Ladbury Funeral Home to the east?
Correct.
Does the commission have any questions for Mr. Josephson? Hearing none, we'll open it up to the public. If you have any comments on this rezoning, please come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Commission, again, Scott Heckman, Founder Engineering, same piece of property. It's the center portion, the larger portion. They're reconfiguring that lot configuration in there, and then they wanted to, again, rezone that complete lot, so it's one zone. If we did not, it would have a northern portion of that lot would end up being low residential. So, then, we wanted to reconfigure it, so it was all one zone. The darker portion that you see that's hatched there on that L-shaped property is remaining low residential. It's always been there. It was a larger portion. We just shrunk it up a little bit, and we wanted to keep it, the residential there, to keep separation from the commercial, so that's going to remain residential.
Anything, any questions for Mr. Heckman? None? Thank you. And we'll, seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote on ordinance 1617. Need a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. And a new ordinance for Donald Gerber. Mr. Josephson?
Yes, thank you, President Decker. This is a request for a rezoning petition from agriculture to rural residential. The property is located in the extraterritorial zone east of town, east of the city. The site is generally located in its government Lot 3 and the south half of the northwest quarter of Section 5, Township 140 North, Range 95 West, and is approximately 10.85 acres. The applicant wishes to rezone it, as I said, to rural residential, and they will be coming forward at some point with a, before you, with a request to subdivide that into four, into, into four residential, four residential lots. The Planning and Zoning Commission and City staff recommend approval. This will be the first reading of the proposed rezoning. It should be, I believe, it's ordinance 1618, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Josephson? This is vacant right now, right? There's nothing on the property?
President Decker, correct. There is nothing on the property. There is a, there's a precedent. There's a large lot, residents to the north, you know, to the north of it along Highway 10.
Thank you. We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishes to come up, discuss this rezoning, please come up to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Commission, this is Scott Heckman again with Founder Engineering, the Donald Gerber property. They are wanting to establish some residential lots, rural residential lots. Currently, to the north, immediately to the north of this, there are two residential properties, one that's on the corner of 10th and, I believe it's called Lehigh Drive, and then immediately to the west of that property, there is a residential lot there also. Across from 10th, there's a subdivision there that's rural residential also, so this would tie in with those areas with our request. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Heckman? None? Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Need further discussion from commissioners? I need a motion to approve the ordinance 1618.
Motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? We'll vote. Ms. Jennings?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anything off the timetable? We have no other... Things coming up here, so anything from the commission? Nothing? Anything from the public? Any issues of concern? If you do have anything concerning you, please come up to the podium, state your name. Nothing from the public. I need a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Decker, I have just one item, and I have one reminder, actually. On Monday, July 11, we'll be having the commissioner retreat out at the Retreat Center from 8 until noon, and on Tuesday, the 12th, we'll go from 8 to 5. Just a reminder to be ready and arrival at 8 o'clock, shortly before 8 o'clock at the Retreat Center.
That's out at the old teen center, right?
Yeah, or the old golf course clubhouse over by the Dickinson site.
Or anybody wants to remember it. All right.
Thank you.
Reminder, thank you, Mr. Kessel. And so, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.